All of you. I am sure that whoever is left over in this session, they all are having family businesses. Am I right? Good, very good. I'll try to make it as short as possible, as sweet as possible, and I'll see that I'll get the best from this beloved family entrepreneurs whose journey cycle has been from entrepreneurs to running three third generation businesses. From them, the key takeaways that you can have, their experiences, the visit them, the challenges, and whatnot. Now, the family businesses in India, if you look at particularly in retail, we have more than about almost about 12 million retail outlets in the country. We are known as a nation of shopkeepers. Nowhere in this world, we have such a kind of density of what we have it in India. Probably for every hundred families, there is one outlet to shop. Now, these family businesses in India have been mostly the first generations, second generation, and hardly there are from the third generation. Research has shown that the family businesses, not even thirty percent of it reaches the third generation. Then you can just imagine, the fourth and the fifth generation, we hardly have one or two percent. What has happened to this Indian culture of the joint family, the karta of the family? Yes, all sons and daughters listen to the parents, and the mother used to show only one sign, just listen to your father or just listen to your grandfather, and all of you move one forward. There was one leader. This leadership basically in factor assets now today is becoming into multi-leadership. Okay, when multi-leadership is emerging into the families, what is that? It's the changes which are happening into the family. The families are quite dynamic. Lot of education has come into the families. Both sons and daughters basically are getting into well-educated into the systems. And lot of learnings are coming from the second generation into the family businesses. Now, this second generation, how they are getting into it, into the family businesses? How they are getting aligned? How they are bringing some talent of themselves into the business? How the culture and the tradition of the family has been taken forward? Now, these are all what is called as today, question marks, that there are tugs of war. Yes, there is everything which is going on. Internationally also, if you look at a set, it is similar to what is happening in India. Internationally also, basically in factor, yes, the similar kind of what percentages I gave you, such a similar percentages are what is called as in factor being there. Thirty percent of the family businesses don't reach the third generation. Yes, only hardly two to three percent reach, reach what is called as the fifth generation of family business. Now, we have on the dais, the best biryani that you can get in the town. Mister Nagpal from Talpa Kattien Co., who will be able to share with you all across there. Yes, who will be able to share with you all of almost more than fifty years of business that they have gone into it. And second, we have Mister PN Raw, basically in factor, from PN Raw, basically in factor, we have, yes. Nagaswamy, Naveen, yes. Naveen from PN Raw, basically in factor, yes. Probably the finest suits that you can stitch and you can get it. They are almost of ninety-five years old, basically in factor. The oldest family business has been running, which is of ninety-five years old. He will be able to share the story, basic story of his family and his growth and his challenges, right? Vishal Nahar from Overseas Incorporation, who are in the toys business, where all of you would have used toys to keep your children happy or to keep them their mouth shut. You would have used the toys, basically in factor as such. So he is basically in factor from that. This one, he will be able to share his family expertise. And Mister Suresh Jain, yes. He is the promoter of awards and the gifts. If at all, if you are giving awards and gifts in your company for your employees or for your family members, you should not miss the gifts and the awards made by his company, right? And we have Mister Jagadeesh, basically in factor, from ABC Apparelles, right? They are into fashion. They are stitching one of the finest brands of Wenfield shirts and trousers, right? Absolutely. He'll be in a position to share with you all across there about his family business as such, right?
With sir's permission, can we start the session with a special mantra? We are all here from the morning, and this is evening, so we can understand your energy level. I have a success mantra. Before our show starts, I will just teach you a small technique, if you all can listen me. Are you ready? Yes, we need a booster. Please keep clapping till I don't say stop. Please start. Please nod, nod. More than any of you, very much. Please nod. Thank you very much, thank you very much. This is assurance that we are all serious business man here. This is assurance, we are all serious business man here. Before my idea of Naveen starts his journey, I am sure Naveen, they are all ready and they are ready to listen you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeevi.
Yes, Naveen, if you can share with the audience.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Naveen Pichay, and I'm a partner with PN Raw Fine Suits since nineteen twenty-three. PN Raw was established in the year nineteen twenty-three by my grandfather. He was basically a tailor, started a store on NG Road, had very humble beginnings in his, he actually actually studied under a lamp post, and you know, the kind of start pre-independence days that most of our grandparents have been through. What we learned from my grandfather is a lot of values that he brought into the trade, and there's one very interesting story that he told me, which stays along with us till today. So in about nineteen forty-seven, when you know, the British were leaving India, they were looking for vendors for all their products in their, you know, within the garrison. So it was called the British Garrison, even though we got independence those days. So the appointment was six AM in the morning at the army school. Those days in Bangalore at six AM, it would be fog, you couldn't see for more than five meters. So at five forty-five, my grandfather, you know, this typical panche in his jacket, he would reach that the, and the sentry knocked at the gate, sentry opened the door, and he allowed him inside. The commander, the brigadier of the army was inside waiting for him, and he told him, Mister Raw, please come in. This was at five forty-five. At six o'clock, the sentry comes in and he says, sir, there's nobody else, what do I do? He said, shut the gate. They shut the gate. And they came, my grandfather went in, had a cup of coffee, and he said, sir, what about a business deal? He said, Mister Raw, there is nobody else, the deal is all yours. Although people came in at six oh five, six ten, six fifteen, nobody was even allowed into the gate. That's the foundation with which we are born, and I guess that's how the catering ingrained of our PN Raw still linger on with our family today. Well, we have moved on, I'm the third generation, and you know, just from becoming, being tailors, we have today rebranded ourselves as PN Raw Fine Suits. We believe that we are the finest makers of suits. We offer all kinds of products, right from ready-made to tailor-made, piecework, MTM, canvas, fuse jackets, everything available at our store. We use these values, ingredient in our past, and we try to blend professionalism to give what the consumer wants today. The uniqueness of our business is the fact that we are able to blend product with service. We believe we are able to blend product with service and offer the customer genuine value for his money. Thank you. We are four people from the family, and my wife and my cousin's wife also chip in. It's basically my father, who is about seventy-eight years old today, and my uncle is about seventy-five, and me and my cousin who run the business. It's the fulcrum is me and my cousin who are running the business, we take the support of the family business.
Thanks, Naveen. Yeah, Suresh Jain here from Kesar Gift Mart Private Limited. We come from a business family from Vello, basically from a jewelry and finance business. We have a business standing of fifty-five years in Vello, and this business of Kesar Gift Mart, actually I could say it was accidentally it started, it was not a planned business also because we were from Vello. I have one younger brother with me, but we had an opportunity of a distribution for Divinity and the owner in US, who he forced us to start that in, for Tamil Nadu, and we moved to, and I had to move to Chennai. And by God's days, we became the world's biggest distributor for them in three years' time. And eventually, we have, after a few years of the selling the same product, the customers wanted something different. And we also over a period of time could find that customers were not getting everything under one roof. Like for example, the business what I do today is catering to the corporates by selling them the corporate gifts and awards and trophies, which was not there in such a big way eight to ten years back across India. When people wanted to buy T-shirts, they used to go to buy T-shirts at one place, trophies at one place, mementos at one place, or a souvenirs at one place, a lanyard at one place. So that came into our this thing, and we thought of bringing everything under one roof, and that's how we started. Though we call as, they call us as a gifting company, every product of ours is totally customized. So we are not actually a gifting company where we sell one piece or two piece. Every product which we sell are customized with your name or brand name, and that's how we started. And today, very humbly and proudly also, we can say that we have brought lot of dignity and respect to this corporate gifting industry, which is more than two thousand crore industry, which people used to take, before used to take by a bag and used to go and sit outside the office for two hours, four hours. But today, after we have come into the business, we have made a showroom for this, which was never there before. And after that, hundreds of stores have come across India after we have started, and trophies was not at all there. There was not such recognition eight, ten years back. In the last eight, ten years after we have brought in, it's also, this trophy business, this recognition business is a five thousand crore business in US. In India, it's not recognized, and that's how we started. Today, I can also say there are at least hundred trophy stores in Chennai alone, after we have come into this thing.
How many members are there in the family business?
My brother is there now, he is looking into his jewelry business. I have two sons, who have also joined my business just three years before and one just a year before. And they like to join this business, I wasn't, they were not forced to join because they like this concept and everything. So we are now into this, not only into this showroom, we have multiple stores now. And now we have came out with a very beautiful concept of opening up a store under Hyundai factory, where all products are done under Hyundai name itself, the brand under Hyundai. It's called as a Hyundai brand shop.
Is it a proprietorship company or a?
Mine is a private limited company.
Yes, it's a private.
Private limited company, and we have stores in Fama too, as well as in Chennai also, and we are planning to expand this thing. And the childrens have joined, and now we are also getting into online, kesar dot u. Thank you.
It's Vishal. Hi, good evening. My name is Vishal. I represent the company Toy House. We are basically into supplying toys to retailers via distribution, as well as we supply to retailers directly as well. This is a twenty-four-year, twenty-five-year-old company, which was started by my father. My brother joined in, he started, he started the company about ninety-four. My brother joined about two thousand, and then I came in. The biggest value which I've learned from my father is innovation in toys. He always believed that acceptability is based on availability. And he came in at a time when India has just liberalized, and they signed the WTO agreement, which, which, which meant imports had become a lot more easier. And he started importing toys at that point when nobody else was actually importing. And that's where we created our brand name Toy House, which was then known finally in the distribution circle. Today, I can proudly say, I was, I was very lucky to be a part of this family, but I had the opportunity to work with Toy House and learn so much from my father and my brother, which I will elaborate more with as the discussion goes on. But more than anything else, I'm wonderful, it's wonderful to be here, and thank you, Karan.
Can share also, whether it's a proprietorship?
Yes, ours is a proprietorship company, and currently it's my brother and myself who support our father in his business. And that's three of us.
So still your father is controlling your?
Uh, I think, I think, I think more than controlling, I would call it as a guide. And because as, to give a very simple example, I joined the business after completing my engineering in Anna University in about two thousand three. I worked for a year, and I joined as the owner's son. So I had all the liberties what an owner would have. Today, when I look back, I wasn't competent to be in that position. After that, I went ahead and I did my education. He, he pushed me to go into my MBA in US, and then I worked with Citigroup for a couple of years. After I came back, I came back and I joined a company called Spalt Splash, which was a manufacturing toy company in China, which was setting up its base in India. I was exposed with them for about three years, and the amount that I learned over there for three years, then bringing it back into Toy House made a very big difference compared to what I was when I joined without experience. So, yes, happy to be here.
Good evening, friends. I like to tell you before I start. This is the business started by me. It's not about a generation completely. I am the field of fashion for last thirty-five years. But as you said, parents have some dream, they have some business, and they want to continue. Though war starts if they say yes, if they say no. In my question, my family were doing textile business. And they wanted me seeing my talent and imagination, that you will go for bigger business. They were in three D, they were expecting me that I would start manufacturing or three D more and more. I did it for three months, and I convinced my family, I will do value-added business in my family. And they said very clearly, what value added can do? I said, I'll make fabric in hundred rupees, selling hundred ten rupees, I will not do this business. Let whole world make fabric for me in hundred rupees. I will convert into a garment, and I'll sell it for three rupees. My fundamental science was very simple, and they had trust on me. Proud to say, thirty-five years back, my family has trusted on me. The idea which I brought, I convinced them that your business will continue with value added. And I started my career with a smart shop, it's called Impression, three eighty square feet, in a corner. Some of my colleagues are here, even thirty-five years back, I believe in quality, innovation, and perfection, and they used to follow. Many of the success brand used to follow style of Impression. From there, I started career, and I proved size doesn't matter. Size doesn't matter, wow, big your tree, and what is size of your business? Keep behaving according to that, and keep updating yourself. From there, I started journey of distribution, and one Friday, we started manufacturing under the name called Wenfield. We started with the forty garments a day, but you should sell forty garments the same day. Because in fashion, we say, there is no expiry date, there's only manufacturing date. If your garment is not acceptable in the first day, it is expired. So I had a policy at that time, they were saying, if you remember, I used to put forty shirts in the ring and go some of the store like Nidewal and all that, and I used to sell the same day. Today, that's what, we produce around four thousand garments a day. In this industry of journey, we understood quality is very, very important. Of course, it should be a reach of India, and prices should be affordable. So there's no differences what size and how big, how free you do. It is how much we love our perfection, how much love our profession, it keep growing. This is journey we started down, then we gone to retailing, seeing my past retail experience. Today, we have forty many stores, and all around east and west, we travel. Still, it's not that big size, but I keep enjoying. So thirty-five years of journey, I only believe one thing, maintain your quality, maintain your commitment, and love your fashion, be the style. Thank you, friends.
If you can share with us, whether it's a proprietorship, for partnerships or related?
Any company needs a company, it's a value.
Good evening, much. Thank you, Roy, for having me here, and in your, you got a perfect question. I can go for, you know, with the, you are the famous, so in a brilliant kind of thing, which we now use possibly as a, so that's how, how we differentiate from the computer, like computer. This brand was started in nineteen fifty-seven by my grandfather, it's no more. And so this brand was, even though it started in sixty years back, but it's new to Chennai city. It just came back two thousand ten, we started in two thousand ten in Chennai city. And from now, the only party is friends, of course, that grow, and the carry on, grow and grow since that was said. In short term, I think nutrients are doing, I think they are doing much for, for Britain, here in computers in Chennai or India. So, so all this story started is, yeah, actually now, people started eating pizza, bolognese, and noodles, and those kind of stuff, you know? So, our traditional food is not being eaten properly in China. I feel, people are buying it, those are, it is something different, but the traditional food of southern, I'm aware of before. Okay, bar, you know, those are, and those kind of food, which is being followed in mostly in those areas in China. So, my traditional is back on my own. I want to bring my grandfather's story here, and my grandfather began, yeah, that's all, he came to Chennai two thousand ten. And first back, we work in Anada, from Anada, a branch is in New Delhi, I was using there, yeah? So there is a, the quote which we have in progress here. So most, I think, the story is since a very different person's role, but if you have a boss, and if you have a good people with your, I think, they can actually move on, move on from your business. Thank you.
Nice to hear the story of their journey at different cycles of their organization age. All these gentlemen should be working for about eighteen hours in a day. Can I ask them from each one of them, how their wives feel about them?
Let me ensure. My wife enjoys that work eighteen hours, so she has hundred percent freedom at home, she is the boss. Nowadays, last November, December month, when we see, and we go early home, she say, aaj kuch business nahi hai kiya.
We want to see less and less of you there.
Initially, it was like that, the first fifteen years of, but the last ten years has been different. You know, I realized that I was not paying attention to the children at home. So we brought in some amount of professionalism in the business, not professionals, professionalism, different. So, I do, I work only ten hours a day, six days a week, and sometimes I work lesser than six days a week. It's important, I feel, that whether family business or otherwise, that we have to strike a balance between family time and business hours. I try not to bring any work home, which I'm very successful at that, actually. Very rarely bring work at home. And since Lakshmi, my wife, is, does come to the office on a daily basis, she also gets to see what's happening in the office, and she understands that if I'm having a long day, she kind of figures it out. She probably takes a little, I enjoy watching my kids play basketball, my elder son plays basketball, and my younger one plays football. I regularly take them for football or basketball and spend time, even the parents who are there. I think it's important to bridge that gap, either, either which way, your professional options.
I got married. I got married, this is. If both are married, I think most of them will be having the same thing, so you can hear it.
Okay. See, I had come to, as I just mentioned, I had come to Chennai when I was just thirty-five, and I had got into a business which needed a lot of my dedication and time. And the situation was so much that better when I went with my brand, which I mentioned, Divinity, I had to go through some many other things at that time between thirty-five and forty-three, of my age today, I'm forty-nine. So it has been a very difficult journey in Chennai for the last fifteen years for me. I don't think I would also have to work so much if I was continued in my family business in Vello, because I had my father's support, my brother's support, everything. But here, the business, everything was new to my family also, and everything was professionalized, so that was difficult for me. And I really respect my wife so much for this, that she has daily assisted in the last fifteen years. I honestly have not given much time to her, though, and many times, I would like to, whenever I travel abroad, I like to take her also out, and she has traveled with me, but she gets bored walking in the exhibitions, and also she stopped traveling with me. And, but every time I tell her, okay, next year may I come, but it does not happen, and I don't know when it will happen. So, I was just feeling guilty, but one day when I read in the paper about Infosys, Narayan Muthi, he said, the world tells that I'm so-and-so, but my wife, on a scale of ten, she rates me only five. So I am also happy, but my wife rates me only on a scale of ten, it's my, thank you.
Can anyone in this panel answer? Is it the less the number of members in the family in the business, is it better? Or the more the number of family members in the business, is it better?
It's all dependable size of the business and your dream of the business. It's not about the more or less, it's about your requirement. Every entrepreneur have to understand their requirement. If your business size is bigger, your idea and business should be bigger, and you should have quality team there. I don't believe that you need more members to do more business, you need quality members to do more business.
Can one of you basically in factor, can share with the audience, what are the challenges of running a family business?
Can I? Yeah, please. I think the foremost challenge in running a family business, if you have more than four or five, or for an example, even three in our case, is corporate governance. Identifying who takes care of what department in your company is very crucial. And you, and it's important that we, that we also have a head in, in our case, it's our father. We do have our own independence in doing whatever we need to. But traditional family business, which was about twenty years ago, was only, you only had a one go-to man, and he makes all the decisions and then you work. But now, things have changed with technology coming in, and to expand, you have to be everywhere. One person cannot handle it. So whether it's three or whether it's five, having a corporate governance and having each person handle, and each person working towards the same goal, where you can review what they have done and correct wherever required, is very crucial to a personal function.
Now, I could see that some of you are from the private limited companies. That means, have you attracted professionals from outside your family to manage your business?
There are a lot of people who are at the leash of.
Running a family business, I feel you should, you should not run only the family business, you should, they are professionals also. See, my concern has been, for last three years, we, we are running a family business. Don't have this, any professional guys, because I don't have my professional guys, yes? So I, I come from, like, I am a lonely queen of a man, so my, I'm just a poet. But I want to recruit a professional as well, I believe, I can say, in the system. So I'm, so I, I have a guy from a task, who is very, appropriate my manager. So this, you should have a recruitment of professional in the business, otherwise, only the family boss can go in a certain station.
In toys, toys is a lot about designing. In toys, uh, toys is a lot about designing. Now, uh, I will have ideas on what can said, but I can't design a toy to a, to a hundred percent, I cannot design. So that's where we have to hire designers. And, uh, each, now I'm good in something, my brother might be good in something. We need external professionals to come and complete the overall business so that we can compete in the market. And outside professionals, when you join with the family values and, uh, the family brains which we all put in, is essential. And I think that's what makes a successful family business.
If I may add that, you know, uh, it's very important that the family has professionalism there. Like you say, you know, each vertical, each partner or whatever you call it, should be given certain responsibilities with certain accountability. Now, in your area where you do not have an expertise, like in our case also in IT, which today technology has grown very much part of us with our business, we don't have an area of expertise. So we have to hire a professional there. So wherever you do not have an expertise level, making it a professional is important. And as a family business, willing to pay that professional his market, uh, remuneration should be accepted by the rest of the family members. At times I have seen in certain families, the salary of the professional is more than what the partner earns. So that's, you, then you, over a number of probably you take, share the profits or whatever. But that's what demands today, the business demands that.
Good. Have you all bought, brought any investors into the company or is it all owned by the family itself? Your ownership is hundred percent family-owned or is there anybody else basically like investors have you brought into your company? And still controlling basically the family?
Ours is a hundred percent.
Likewise.
Currently it is, but I think going forward, with a lot of big companies coming from international, we have to have investors and which is what we're working on to start coming to expand because only then you can compete with them. Otherwise, family-owned businesses will have challenges going forward.
Chakriesh.
Very, very, very interesting subject. No business starts without investment. Only the idea and concept keep changing. When we used to start before business, our friends used to come in a secret cover and gives you a fund to start the business. And we used to tell them, don't tell anybody you're giving me. And business used to start with that investment. As the time grew, banker came in picture and investor come in picture, now keep growing. Today, if you see the leading newspaper, all the startup companies say, he is raising funds so much, he is fundraising so much. So world has become transparent. So now we are all ready, can next time, if any investor comes big and we have a bigger plan, we can enter. But as a sinew sense, sir, until today, we have many investors, like our retailers, our family fund investment and our bankers. As time comes, we will prefer for professional investors also, we will welcome them.
I could see that, I have just touched the iceberg of what I wanted to bring them out and the clock is already showing, your time is out, your time is completed. Am I right? Is there, is, is there time and it's completed? It's over, right, okay, right. Now, one last question, I will take it from the, to this panel, either one of you or two of you can do it. Yes, as a theme of this retail summit is all about values, value and valuation. Can one of you share basically in fact that what values that have you brought into your company and into your family and which you are nurturing it across there to create value for your customers and then finally creating valuation for your company?
You see, my company, the products what I sell adds value to the customers also. It actually adds a brand to them also as well as to us. And my business is something that my commitment has to be hundred percent. If I deliver the material, like for example, please the rice of it, if I deliver the material after one hour, it's a waste. So the biggest challenge for us is also a commitment which we have done. And we have added value to my customer as well as we have added value to ourselves as well as to our brand and etc. Yeah, this is also interesting. See, value, values, valuations. The day I started my career and who are buying my product, they are still buying my product. And they still say me, you are better than last year. So I think this is our valuation. The continued journey of twenty-three years, keeping the same retailer buyer and acceptance in customer, it is our valuation.
See, I believe as a, as an entrepreneur or as a founder, whether you're a third generation or if you're responsible, rightly your responsibility is to create a certain culture in the organization. Today, this is becoming very important and these are by, led by examples of not what you talk, but what you do, what people see you doing. So at one point of time, just reading the story, we had a, a very important customer who was purchasing for about more than a lack of peace. He purchased and there was some issue with the fabric coming to us very late. And, uh, I got a call from our manufacturing place and they said, sir, we, uh, I have to make some short changes in this garment and give it ready. I said, no way, we can't do it. He said, no, sir, this is a very important customer, we have to deliver one time. So I made the statement, refund the money to him. Or go to his house, do what it takes, but we will not compromise on the way we make our product. Now, what happened with the customer, separate matter, we spoke to him, we cajoled him, that's okay. But the moment I said something like that, it set the tone in the organization that we will not compromise. The moment I had said, okay, make it and give it, the customer would have been happy or everything would have been happy, but it would have broken that culture bandwidth. This is as any entrepreneur, at whatever level that you may be, you may be a startup, you may be a fifth generation, the tenth generation, your job is to build a culture in the organization. This will stem your value, this will stem all the things that eventually will bring the valuation also to your business, your culture, that's important for me.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Yes, I could see. Sure enough, absolutely.
I'm sorry for interrupting you, I just want to ask one question before we end up. How many of you are in the family businesses? Sitting here, okay. So one thing I just like to share, just my opinion, this thing is there. It's, uh, like our parents or our grandfathers had ten, fifteen childrens, they used to deliver, develop ten, fifteen childrens. Nowadays, we hardly have one or two childrens and we are not sure whether our childrens also will follow us into a business. That is one and another one is because we have very less family members as the days goes by or the years goes by. It is very, very good and very necessary that you bring professionals into your business. At the same time, you manage as owners. Whatever may be the case, the owner has to be there, knowing a total knowledge of what, what's happening in the office from A two is it. But at the same time, bringing professionals and start bringing professionals into your business will be very good for our future. Thank you.
I could see from this panel, uh, eminent panel, they were able to share basically in fact that how important the culture, the tradition, the values which are nurtured over a period of time and their commitments towards those cultures, values and traditions are very, very important for the sustenance of the business and the family. And also I could see across there in fact that many of the panelists over here said across there, if you have to grow, you have to professionalize your family business. The professionalizing can be from the family members as well as basically bringing or looking forward professionals where you need the talent. With the, with this, with this, do you have five minutes question and answers or how is it? Okay, thank you very much, nice to find, thank you.
Before end, is it interesting for a speaker, are we are in first, are we are in second or in the last? I've been in many organizations and many clubs. There are two important people, one is the president, one is the secretary. Either we should give welcome speech by president or we should give a lot of thanks by secretary. So I feel very happy and proud to ride. Today we got opportunity being a part of thanks team. So thank you very much everyone from my side, thank you from our panel.